Then let's proceed. The minutes for our end ultimate public hearing held on seventh of July will be available for our commission. Three views since the twenty first July meeting. And as they relate to conditions to the twenty first of July meeting minutes, which have been made available throughout tonight. Say, Commissioner, or chat with the credit of those minutes. And Minister group, I don't think so. Let's talk about how the evening is going to go. Here's three files tonight and kind of see the procedure a little bit. Sure, I have nothing to speak of. I'm going to review what we're going to do tonight, the procedure, the three files of review. And that's what's up on the board. So this is a read the slide situation by left. The first thing that happens with each file is staff presents through four staff are the people to my right. They work for the plane department. They are subject matter experts and they build these files on behalf of the applicants in a way that is to their understanding best their knowledge ability. Unforms with the rules, county and state. After staff present file applicant, the applicant will come up with app, applicant representatives and like both. They'll provide presentation, usually slides and kind of a monologue in between one minute and ten minutes. And then sometimes the last question that's on. And we go into the public testimony portion meeting and for this meeting of the night, the commission did receive written comments. We've had a chance to read through those written comments, but to one exception, it provided, I guess, just minutes before the meeting started, so we'll see. Squeeze that in. But the public testimony portion speeding is where we get to hear testimony from the public. That is the people that are up front of me and we'll start with people who are support the project, people of potential testimony, people against. And I'll, I'll lay out some more rules when we get to that portion of the first file. After that, there's an opportunity for rebuttal, that is, the applicant will come back up to the roster and maybe help understand, helps understand some of the concerns that may have been brought up in testimony composition. After that, the chair, that's me, I'll close the hearing for public testimony and permission to people with myself and people to my left, who are not employed by the county, but are volunteers, people who want to do this to be nice. We will, we will deliver it and we'll do our best not to childish and on behalf of the public. Deliberation is important. It's important that to know that the commission has not discussed, we have not discussed the details of this file with each other for this meeting to all of that in public. And that's what this deliberation portion tonight will be about. So all the information that we have, I would mention that's available, although it's the same. At the end deliberation, I usually make a decision to approve or not approve the file. Yeah, so our first file tonight. This is own change application DC ten dash point two. So I changed from rural ten to rural five. The applicant is I can earn if that applicant directly later. Yeah, that's your question is unchanged from rural ten to rural five and parcel is ten acres. Property is on rural ten. Project off lazy state road in section eighteen, country fifty-four north, range two west, posing ready. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or communication to disclose this time? Okay. Daniel, you're presenting this.
I am, Commissioner. Are you ready?
All right.
Okay, Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. We're here this evening to discuss his own change from rural ten to rural five. Water County Vice Code twelve dash one, one, one. Lets us know that the zoning ordinance is already in accord with comprehensive plan in Idaho State Code. On account revise code twelve dash two sixteen allows staff and governing bodies to review the particular circumstances of the application and find that they're in accord with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Twelve dash three twenty point one. Tells us that each zoning district has a purpose statement which we follow that helps us guide these applications. And make a determination if it's consistent with the code. So in this case, these folks are in the rural district and the purpose of the rural district is to establish low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. That could be limited residential density on small sale farming, forest activities, tourism, recreation. Sometimes in these areas encouraged to do conservation development configurations to create open space, reduce infrastructure costs and enhance recreational opportunities. That can is requesting his own change from our ten to our five for the purpose of seeking a family division of the parcel into two five acre parcels. The request was evaluated against the standards for our five and our ten. The parcel is turning the comprehensive plan rural residential. These are the standards in B C R C twelve dash three, two, three for the rural district. And this is a breakdown of that piece of code. For the rural ten, we look to see if the land is characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent. If critical wildlife habitat exists on that parcel. If it has primax soils. If it's not served by a standard road system that either meets title two or appendix A of title twelve. If it's within a floodway and if it has limited public services. In order to achieve for a parcel to achieve the role five, it's got to be developed at or near one dwelling unit for five acre density and or does not meet any of the criteria as Phil mentioned. So some background on this particular parcel, it is ten acres. It is own rural ten, the land use time designation is rural residential. It is access off laser state lane, which is a privately owned and maintained gravel road. Some environmental factors associated with this parcel, it does have map slopes that we see here on the screen this evening that's in yellow. Grade is anywhere from fifteen to twenty-nine percent. As per our mapping system. It does not contain any map wetlands, does not contain any waterfront or streams. It's within flood hazard zone X, which means no flooding or minimal chance of that. Services are available for this particular parcels and individual well, individual septic. Fire protections afforded through South Creek Fire District. Powers Northern Lights is within the school district eighty-four. These are the two soil types found on the parcel, neither one of them are prime part land. These are the agencies that were routed for comments, panel health district, Roden Bridge. They commented, those are cast in your files this evening, D Q. Idaho Department of Water Resources and Idaho Fishing Game commented with no comment. Several letters received in support of this proposal this evening. This is the conclusion of the standards of the review. So as we discussed the parcel a little bit, we found that it's not characterized by slope secret and thirty percent. There's no critical wildlife habitat on that parcel. It does not contain primax soils. It is served by private road that meets appendix A standards. So within a flight plane. And it is not limited to public services. It is however, developed at or near one dwelling for five acre density and also does not meet any of the criteria as support in our ten. This is a mapped area of some approximation of the acreage that it sits by the area where the parcel we're talking about this evening is in yellow. The other acreages in green. So we can see adjacent to this particular parcel and catty corner, there are two parcels that are approximately five acres in size. That are developed that way. The findings of facts and the conclusions of law have not changed since the time staff court was prepared. Staff finds that the proposed zone change is consistent with the bottom county revise code. And that concludes my presentations, commissioners, I can take any questions you might have.
Any question for the, uh, for Daniel and staff?
Yeah, Daniel, is lazy state lane, is that a private road?
Correct.
And it meets the, what I believe is twenty-two foot wide, is it twenty?
It exceeds it. Travel service, it leaves twenty-four feet is what I neighbor.
Dan, which, which direction is the split horizontally?
Um, that's a good question for the applicant. We haven't seen the family division yet. We're not at that stage.
Okay.
They may have that information, I think they're here at the beginning.
And when you talk about a family division, is that a minor land division or are they settled separate?
That's a separate land use action.
Okay, thank you.
It's different.
When you reach the roster, make sure you're speaking to the microphone and say your name for the record. And the record means like for people at home and for people are going to watch the recording here.
My name is Heather Fegner and I own the ten acres on lady's state. Just for the recording. Okay. And my purpose of splitting the ten acres into two fives is so that my, I can give five of the acres to my parents. And so they can be close and so I can take care of them in their senior years. This is my mom's children representing.
Hi, Irene, what's your name?
Christie Squiers.
Will be questions for the applicants?
Well, a question I had earlier from staff with which direction is the vision going to be?
We're still considering that because she's building her home right now. So it's going to look something like, can I point it on here?
Yeah.
Be kind of like this. Because, because of a home and a shop for her portion can have been just a small little home.
Topography towns and things. Slow to gather around.
No, just because she already, she already has her shop on there and is already building a home and yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. For public testimony tonight. So Heather figure you just presented. And Miss Squires, James Squires, you want to speak as well tonight?
No.
Okay, and then Antonio John, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, and did you want to speak or are you here just to support this? Okay, thank you. Alright. We received several public comments in writing and they were all in favor. What I'll do right now, open this up to public testimony now. I'll go over the rules anyways, because what's about to happen after this. So the role of public testimony are these. Come up to the roster and state your name for the record. We have a timeline of three minutes to share your thoughts, concerns about our work support about this file. Any public testimony may receive three extra minutes, no more from any other person who's signed up to share public testimony for total of no more than six. Comments are limited to the specifics of this file because that's all the commission can make a decision on tonight. If any public testimony agrees with a previously shared public testimony, we show your respect for everyone's time and simply state agreeing with that test. Personal or derogatory comments, version of position are not allowed. And then the chair will ask to leave this from that hand. Clapping cheering booing also not allowed. Remember that this hearing is being shared live via the internet and being reported for public viewing later. So the chair opens the hearing public testimony. Is there anyone present who did not sign up, would like to share public testimony from the roster tonight? Or against or neutral positions this file? There anyone online, agenda? Director of the bell, though. And that is the commission that are to discuss the file, do you have any discussion issues? You know, I think it's pretty straightforward. The chair closes the hearing to public testimony. And we'll skip rebuttal and future's going out, deliberate file. Commissioners, deliberate.
I'm a person who's typically concerned about changing the zoning, especially in the downward direction. I think it was it moved me that so many people that live in the neighborhood felt that this was something that they wanted in their neighborhood. And we didn't hear some of the comments that we hear from other places where my wells are dry or my roads not being cared for. And that moves me if their neighborhood is in favor of this, then it's hard for me to push back.
All this stuff works and get off the boat, treats the grassroots, grassroots movements.
Well, I believe in grassroots movements. So I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable with it. I'd like a motion to recommend approval.
A little harder than that, but go ahead.
I mean, do you want to ask?
It takes more than, okay, sure. Waiting commission for me, care to make a motion.
Yes, I moved to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners on this project file Z C zero, zero, one dash twenty-two, or is it ten? Requesting zone changes from rural ten to rural five, finding that is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the bottom county comprehensive plan and bottom county device code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further moved to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law and set forth in the staff report or as amended during hearings, the director planning staff to grant the written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chair sign and transmit to all interested parties. This is actions is not resolved in the table of private property.
Commissioner weekly has set something in motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Webster, second, second motion, commission will now vote. Commissioner Webster, I.
Commissioner Scott, I.
Commissioner things with I.
Commissioner Wade with I and Commissioner Marvel, I, looking very with by voting in favor and not voting against. Second cloud tonight is file S one dash twenty-two subdivision. The woods at priestly. The applicant is requesting to reclass existing lot for recently wet sub thirty twenty nineteen. Where there is a lot ranging in area from zero point two seven nine acres to two point zero seven one acres. The subject property is zone recreation and it is later and off Mandy Lane. Section nineteen, project sixty-one north, ranging four west, pointing right. Does any commissioner have conflict of interest expert communication to disclose this time? Commissioner Marvel does have conflict of interest and so I will accuse myself of this file. I gave advice to the applicants two years ago now about this particular project and had him in my office for a couple of hours. So I'll go ahead and step down and Commissioner Lance, that would you think were being shared this one?
Yeah, you got cheat sheet.
On my computer, that's okay, I think, okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to establish, we're going to start this.
Good evening commissioners. So I would like to start with some general introduction about subdivisions because this is not the kind of file that this commission has heard before. Subdivisions are not like condition use permits, variances or zone changes. Through subdivisions, the applicant is requesting a density, the lot sizes that are permitted to them by right because of the zoning in which they are located. And keeping that in mind, we'll proceed with the first subdivision we have here. So the first subdivision is the woods at priestly. It's a request for nineteen residential lots on a, on a already platted property. And the range and the size of the lots range from zero point two seven five acres to two point zero seven one acres. Here is a copy of the flat that was submitted to the planning department for review. This property is currently vacant. It is platted as lot four of priest Lake West subdivision. It is approximately ten point two eight acres in size. It is zone recreation and has a land use designation of resort community. The property has direct access and frontage on Mandy Lane, which is a Bonner County owned and privately maintained public right of way. It does not contain slopes of over thirty percent grade. There is a small part of the side that that does contain slopes between fifteen to thirty percent, twenty-nine percent grade. The southwest portion of the side does contain wetlands. Reader Creek also passes through the southwest portion of the site. It contains soils that are classified as non-prime farmland. They are located within flood hazard zone D and not located within any floodways, it wouldn't require any further flood plain review. As per Idaho Department of Fishing game, some wildlife may be present in the sub, in the vicinity of the subdivision, but no critical wildlife habitats have been identified in the area. Here is the map showing the wetlands, the creek running through and the slopes on the property. Granite Reader Water and Sewer District provided a will serve letter to provide sewer service to the, to the proposed project. Six of the proposed lots are intended to be served by individual wells, thirteen lots will be served by shared wells. If the project will also be served by Northern Lights, West Priest Lake Fire District, West Bonner School District number eighty-three. Bonner County Ambulance District and Foundry Hospital District. These were the agencies that were notified of the project on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. These agencies commented on the files, I will briefly go over the comments that we, that we received. So Roden Bridge requires improvements of Mandy Lane to Mandy Lane. They see improvements to the road to widen it, add ditches, clear bush and meet the current standards for a privately maintained public road are recommended as condition of approval. A stop sign and new road name sign should be installed. They also require addition of a plaque note, Mandy Lane and the roads within this data privately maintained and public roads and have not been constructed to county standards for county maintenance. They also require some corrections on the note on the plat. They require that flatlots and right away boundary lines are what should be adjusted to match the current road layout system as drawn. They require utility installations to comply with the Bonner County revised code. They also talk about stormwater curves and intersections. We received comments from Idaho Department of Fish and Game. They basically replied with a standard comment saying that projects are not reviewed on a case by case basis. And if people have questions about how to proceed with this project, they should refer to their standard manual. We received comments from Idaho Department of Fish and Game. They wrote a four page letter saying how to mitigate any impacts to wildlife habitat. They made suggestions which if implemented and included in covenants would reduce any adverse impacts to wildlife. They requested considering the more wildlife friendly subdivision design, increase in open spaces and retention of wildlife travel corridors. They also mentioned that none in the area is currently considered wildlife habitat. They suggested that lot thirteen should be considered unbuildable and remain as open space. The department will not be responsible for losses of domestic animals, ornamented plants of private property. They say that standing timber and natural vegetation should be retained as much as possible on the side. They recommend using wildlife friendly fencing. They commented that development in the area may increase hazard to both big game and drivers. They made some general wildlife considerations, recommendations for residential development as well. The next comment we received was from Idaho Department of Water Resources. They take no position on the proposal. But they say that the use of a well for multiple, multiple forms will require an application for permit prior to drilling. Prior to the drilling permit being issued unless it meets the exemption criteria. Idaho Transportation Department replied with no comments. Northern Lights provided a will serve letter saying that this entire development can be served by N L I. And we received comments from Panhandle Health District. They say that for the sanitary restriction to be lifted from the flat, the applicant has to meet certain conditions which are listed in their letter. We did not receive any other comments from any of the public agencies. Some existing, some public comments received the following, raised the following concerns. Existing easement not shown on proposed flat, concerns for trespassing due to higher residential density, impacts on groundwater, traffic, noise pollution, availability of water, increased waste and drainage, increased potential for fire, construction traffic, one way in and one way out of the subdivision, adequate access for emergency vehicles, potential sewer project plan for the area granite sewer district shortage capacity for residents already in the area failing septic systems. These are the standards, Bonner County devised code standards against which this project was reviewed. I will know, I will not go with each of these standards one by one. It's a, it's an elaborate list already in the staff report. All of these reviews that are marked in red, which say, see, see, see conditions of approval. They basically mean that the project doesn't yet meet these standards, but if implemented, if approved through the preliminary flat process, they would be required to meet all these conditions before going into the final flat process. And we will go over conditions of approval at the end of this presentation. After reviewing this project against the applicable standards, staff did find that the, that the project is consistent with the Bonner County advice code, including standards, review, findings of facts, conditions of approval and conclusions of law in the stock report. And staff recommends approval with conditions. The findings of fact for the, for the project have not changed since the staff report was prepared. Recreation zoning permits creation of twelve thousand square feet or larger lots provided both urban water and urban sewer services after are, are provided. If only urban sewer is provided, then the minimum lot size can be twenty thousand square feet. And those are the two standards that the applicant is using in this project. The conclusions of law have not changed since the, since the last time the stock report was prepared. These are certain conditions of approval that we have included in the staff report based on the public comments received and all the standards review and the agency review that was provided to us. So they would have to show all easements of record, including sufficient recording data to identify conveyance. The sanitary restriction shall be denoted on the flat. A fire hazard rating, rating and A fire hazard rating, rating and suppression plan was submitted as part of the application. In addition, they would have to fulfill these, one of these conditions that are listed on this thing here. Then these are some other notes or conditions of cruel that came up during the stock reviews. Condition seven refers to preliminary road design plan and profile that was submitted by the applicant. It was reviewed by Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. And after review of the, of those preliminary plans, Bonner County Road and Bridge came up with a list of their own conditions. So the applicant is required to fulfill all those conditions before the flat can get recorded. The validity of the preliminary flat is for two years and they have to submit a final flat before um the, before the expiry of these two years. The applicant will also be required to submit a, submit an improvements plan which would include stormwater management, floor design, sewer water installation uh and any other improvements, fire hydrants or anything else that is required to to be put in the subdivision. And all those improvements would have to be made before the final flat gets recorded. If those improvements are not made before the flat gets recorded, they would have to enter into a surety agreement with the board, putting in one fifty percent of the value of the improvements uh in the bond. The applicant, applicant is not at the final flat stage as of now, but when they move from preliminary flat to the final flat stage, they would also be required to cons- to fulfill these conditions that are listed in point twelve. And again, a grading or stormwater management plan was prepared by the engineers and they were submitted to the Bonner County Engineering Department for their review. The applicant would be required to uh resubmit those plans according to the comments made and update those stands, get the approval from Bonner County before they can proceed with the subdivision. The site does contain back wetlands, but no land disturbing activities have been proposed in the area, uh in the wetland area. And therefore they are not required to submit wetland delineation at this time. However, in future, after the approval of this flat, when they come to us for the building location permit and the building is located within the, within the uh wetland boundaries, they would be required to submit wetland delineation. And sixteen ourselves, sixteen and seventeen are some standard conditions which again refer to the flat at the final stage and are not really applicable right now. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions at this time.
Spotty, you, you mentioned that there's the um wetlands that would need delineating at the time of building location permit. Can you point out on the path where those are and is it a substantial amount of a specific lot or is it just the edges?
It is basically the edge. If you look at this purple area or the pink area, that's basically the edge. Um. And that was the, and it's also shown on the flat here. So it's this dotted area.
How many acres is lot eleven? Point two seven six. Or maybe I'm either tea lot thirteen. Okay. Thank you.
And how much title work do you typically do in your process to, you know, um, some of the letters spoke to easements that went through there. Do you have any specific knowledge of any of those? Or did you do any title work?
We, we don't have that knowledge. Planners don't have that knowledge, but those these stats are routed to the county surveyor for their review, to the engineers for their review and we be, and basically that is why we require the, the surveyor who prepares the flat to stamp the flat. Because if anything goes wrong with it, it goes back to the surveyor and they are responsible for correcting it.
Cause I'm gonna think that can simply get that address and, and yes. Any other questions for Sam?
Okay, thank you, Spotty. Uh, is it Alpen or Alpen representative? Travis Tyler, uh, I'm Clay, professional land surveyors, uh, looking at three oh three church street here in downtown Sandpoint. Um. I want to say thank you to Swati. Um, that was, that was a very well put together, well uh, mediated, uh, probably one of the best summaries I've seen, uh, especially with the nineteen lot subdivision and all the details that go into this. I think you, they do the planning department, they do the commissioners. Um. We're here in the preliminary flat stage. Um, I'm going to present the overall design, the idea behind this. Um. So there are a lot of comments. You did see a lot of conditions of approval. That's because this is a not a, not a uh a stamp gets approved and we're done. This is more like a jigsaw puzzle. We have to take a little of this, give an idea, present it to the county, they review it, we manipulate it, we make the corrections as needed. That's why there's um, uh, that's why the stormwater erosion control plan wasn't like a final document, you know, because it needs to be looked at. The road design is not a final document. Uh, the, the design by seven B engineering. That's because Roden Bridge hasn't had a chance to look at it. There's no point in spending all this time and money. So I just want to lay that out there for everybody. So here's our idea, uh, woods at Priest Lake. It is a nineteen lot subdivision. Um, so here's an overall, um, see how it's seven going up the west side, Priest Lake, Roth, uh, Reader Bay Road. Uh, Reader Bay Road is right up there. This is a, a shot of the surrounding subdivisions in the area. This is our subject property, the ten point three, ten point two eight figures. You can see the other lots in the area. This is uh the same photo with lot sizes now. Elkins Bay Resort down here, the subdivisions and their corresponding lot sizes as well. So just kind of lay the foundation for what's going on. Um. This is the design. Uh, there are some corrections to be made. The road for one of them. Um, put in a stop sign probably here, make it come in. Um. There are nineteen lots. We're proposing two blocks, uh, block one with lots one through fifteen coming around. And then in the middle of the, the road, uh, Brown Bear Drive, uh, we have block two lots one through four for a quarter of nineteen lots. Um, the lots in the middle are planned to be fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, the ones at the top. So fifteen here and then the twenty thousand up here, those are all being proposed for individual wells. Hence the twenty thousand, a little bit slightly larger, and then the smaller lots in the backside um are the twelves. Those are going to be um, uh, the twelve thousand, uh, that's about a, a quarter of an acre. Um, and those are going to be on shared uh, well, water system. And the whole subdivision is going to be served uh by Granite Reader, uh, Water and Sewer District for septic. So, um, I'll go through the ideas here. These are the main points. These are the ones that Swati has brought up. Um. So roads needs easements. Uh, Brown Bear Drive will be twenty-four feet wide travelway with the twelve inch base rock and four inches of top coarse gravel. Uh, that is coming from uh appendix A for the public road privately maintained standards. That is all within a sixty foot right away, which is again standard. Um, the road improvements will extend from the subdivision that I showed to Reader Bay Road via uh, Brown Bear uh right now, as is being proposed, is starting up here, coming down and going around. Um, we are going to take that improvement, the twenty-four inches uh, and taking it all the way out and then going up between, uh, there's a, an entrance right there off of Reader, the Bay Road in between. Oh, that's lot one of the subdivision, the Reader Bay lots, the other one. Back to here, um, Brown Bear is being dedicated to the public um, and be privately maintained um by the lot owners uh through CCNRs that we will put together. Um, all easements of record uh will be shown on the plat if mappable, including nineteen fifty-three Robertson uh easement. Um. That, that easement is planned to go uh right now between wrong buttons, between lots eleven and twelve. This is the old uh easement to access uh some cavern along the shoreline way down here. Um, so uh, just a note, I know we had talked about, about easements. Um, state law requires um as a survey company uh to show all easements of record on the plat if they're mappable, meaning like a road, something like that. Um. Northern Lights, uh, they sometimes will have blanket easements uh over uh lots and stuff like that. And we really can't map that, but in the second page, um, uh, for Glady Services, we do put in another si- uh, another title block called documents and easements of record. And that lists everything within the title report. And so, um, and that being on there, being a recorded uh public document, that, that is what covers us. Um, kind of, yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
Yeah, so, since you passed and talked about that, can I ask you a question?
I would love to, I like, yeah.
Good. So between eleven and twelve is where you're planning on running that.
Yeah, so.
And is that like a thirty foot wide?
So, um.
Is that?
Nineteen fifty-three, there were nothing standards. And so there's a document that just says perpetual easement explains uh what it's over, the grand tour and the grand tea, and it does not specify width. Does specify kind of an area. At the time it came in, something like this came down and wrapped around. And then that comes right around here. So we want to maintain that as much as possible. Um, but uh, we, we are allowed to move easements. Um, and uh, but we want to bring it back in. Now the season it does, which is kind of odd, it's old one, it does actually access the other, um, uh, it's supposedly supposed to go through uh Elkin Bay Resort. So I, I would assume that if the owners wanted to, they could just go Reader Bay Road down Elkin Bay Resort and access their easement that way. So.
So what I'm hearing you say is that they're not currently using.
I don't know.
Okay, that's fair.
Um, state uh courts have deemed that what we call a prescriptive easement or in this case perpetual easement. Uh, they have granted, uh, they have said that if there is no specified width, um, they say at a minimum it's fifty feet wide.
Okay. And does that show on there or that's one of the uh changes that you're planning on making?
Yeah, so uh, as I said before, if we can show it, we have to show it on the plaque. So it, we, we will show it. Yeah. So, um, yeah, just here, uh, all, all the easements of record uh over, within the title report, something that they will be shown on the final plaque if we can show them. Uh, if there is, but if there's like a blanket, something like that. But in the last sheet of the final plaque, we do spell them all out in that document, easements of record section.
Thank you.
Uh, grading stormwater management plan. Um, right now, the stormwater uh uh will be directed through storm drain pipes uh to propose grass infiltration area and treatment, uh, retention. Uh, that's being proposed on lot thirteen.
Um, yes. We go back to the road a little bit. Uh, I'm a little confused. They mentioned in some of the comments and on the road and bridge, they talked about Mandy Road.
Yes, so this is.
Explain that.
All right, so this is Mandy Lane right up here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one you're gonna improve. That is the access to Brown Bear. And so uh, Ronan Bridges asked us to take it back out to this entrance up there in between uh, all the way to Reader Bay.
Okay.
So Reader Bay is the county maintained road. Yeah, I got it. So.
Yeah, it's not clear.
Sorry if I didn't explain that clearly. Um, so the retention for grading and stormwater um will be on lot thirteen down here. Right now, we're envisioning this area. Uh, septic sewer, uh, we have a will serve letter from Granite Reader Water and Sewer District. Um, like Swati said, for a proposed twenty, for twenty-two lots, uh, total, right now there's nineteen. Um, and a new easement proposed between lots four and five for the sewer main. We have been in talks with Granite Reader and their engineering firm. Uh, their main goes to the end of Reader Tracks Road right here. Uh, Reader Tracks is a private road, privately maintained. Um, we're proposing to go through here to access Brown Bear Drive and then running the main uh either this way or this way. That's still to be determined, but that's how we would get to the public uh road from there. So that's the septic and sewer uh water. We're proposing a new water system uh two. Um, right now, uh, shared well systems to serve the thirteen lots, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, and six lots to be served by individual wells. Uh, fire protection, um, per uh Bonner County Code. And I believe it's also a state law. Uh, we have to have a fire protection uh plan put in place as well as mentioned on the plaque. And there's two options right now uh that are being tossed, tossed around. Uh, one is a two thousand gallon water storage tank. Uh, IFC is International Fire Code or in solid approved IFC residential fire suppression sprinkler system. Um, those are being uh dealt with. Uh, and again, this is pretty standard, but the fuel modification distance for what they call a defensible space. Um, thirty feet from any structure needs to be cleared uh for fire hazards. Um, and then again, a final note on the path, uh, addressing this, saying, uh, this, uh, again, there's the, the fire suppression requirement for the Bonner County revised, revised code. Uh, wetlands.
That two thousand gallon tank, that's per lot or that's one for development?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. So I can pass away this one, since I was so. Two thousand gallon water is per lot. However, what they will do is argue for one, two thousand gallon water source and so we write between two lots, just so it's successful.
So it could be every other. So would it be either every or every other?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and what, yeah, whatever it is, we will meet that standard, stay on that topic. So it's either a two thousand gallon water tank per lot or a residential fire system in the house built on the lot, right?
Matt's thinking instead of yes. I don't know. I, I don't know the ins and outs.
It's either or. I mean, you have to meet one of these, one of those conditions.
Yeah, so. Sorry, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, wetlands um are actually being delineated uh uh this week, I believe. Um, so we will have a better idea of where the wetlands are uh for that purpose. Um, and then uh per um Corps of Engineers, County Code, just uh, you know, wetlands are allowed to be disturbed without a permit. I believe only like a thousand square feet is able to be disturbed before you need to get a permit. Uh, there's also wetland setbacks for buildings. Um, depending on the, uh, the quality of the wetlands, it's forty feet from the wetlands. Um, if it's high quality, if it's poor quality, you can minimize that to twenty feet. So these are all things we're aware of. But um, again, things that um uh, we're aware of, but things that we haven't finalized, right? Cause we need to figure out what we're dealing with, get these pieces, talk to these people, you know, work. So. Um, but this is our, this is our idea. Um, the lots are fairly nailed down, lot sizes fairly nailed down, uh, knock on wood. Obviously the water being the, the big one. Um, otherwise, as Swati said, you know, the standard, then all of a sudden raises that lot size minimum to twenty thousand square feet. Um, otherwise, um, that's our idea. Um, that's kind of the layout. Uh, taking questions.
Yeah, Travis, um, in the letter from Idaho Fishing Gaming, they talked about leaving thirteen as an open space. And when I look at thirteen. And when I look at thirteen here, I see that it's part of your stormwater management. It's where you have wetlands, and it's substantially larger than any other lot. Would there be, you know, what are your thoughts around making that be a common space rather than a portion of the lot that would prevent someone in the future who owns the lot from trying to delineate, from pushing into that, but still allowing that to be slightly larger, but a little bit more protected?
I'm a big fan of common space, or more particularly green space. Obviously, that would be the question for the owner and what they see fit. Right now, lot thirteen, as far as I know, it has no ideas of being built on. But, but when it comes to wildlife, there's two things I look at, one is is there critical wildlife insight on, you know, in the area? Plus, lot thirteen, two acres, looking so close in on a wildlife viewpoint is, it's I think we're missing the big picture, right? Obviously, no animal, no big game, it's gonna, their area of habitat is large, right? So I would think we need to look on this on a larger scale than just this two acre piece. But to answer your question, I don't know, that would be an answer for the applicant, for the owner.
And, and you have to, when you're looking at that, you also have to take into consideration that there are currently smaller species that live throughout that ten acres that are going to be substantially impacted with all of the development of the other lots, so leaving some space for them to migrate to.
Right.
You know, I mean, the area.
Yeah.
Is going to be disrupted.
Yeah, yeah, anytime you build, the house you live in, the house I live in, you know all of it, so, yeah, something to think about. Any other questions for? Okay, with the applicant, is applicant here? The owner's here, yeah. Would you like to comment? If you, if you want, you don't have to name. Thanks. We're gonna go ahead and, and as Chairman had up on the screen earlier, we're gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment, so if anybody has signed up, would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and we'd have you go up. Okay, go ahead, state your name for record, please.
My name is Ty Broyles, I live at twenty ninety-two Reader Bay Road. On that plot map that was up there, there was some discussion about the improvements going to be made to Mandy Lane, and I missed a lot of that because it kind of went by really fast. So I'm not real sure on that, but Travis had talked about.
What's a flat map about again?
This access point right here. Which is about ten feet wide and my garage sits right here, you can see the roof right there. My house is right there, and then I own this lot as well. So, my concern and a lot of the neighbors' concern is the fact that nowhere in here, Mandy Lane power poles are in the middle all the way from top to bottom. Can two cars pass each other at the same time without going off the road or into somebody's property? And like I said, I missed a lot of the improvements that were going to be done because everything kind of went so fast there. Something else I on this proposed development, which, number one, I'm not against development in a whole, but to impact such a small area with that many lots, it's is quite, I think, devastating. The infrastructure, and again, I know it's been talked about the improvements, but with the, with the small roads, one way in and out of that, with a loop road like that, if something happens out here in this area, you got all these people are going to be trapped in there. So I would ask the commission to, to think about those to think about that scenario. The wells, I believe that there's a total of seven wells, is that, is that correct? Six individual and then one community? Is that, that's what was proposed? And I don't wonder if the commissioner or the staff would have any sort of guide what that would impact to all the other wells that are already there? That, I mean, seven wells on, on that small of a parcel. I think those are some of the questions that I would like to have answered.
Does anybody have any question? Your name is Ty?
Ty.
Ty, does anybody have any question for Ty? I just want, are you on a private wire yourself?
Yes, I am.
And how many gallons a minute?
One and a half gallons a minute.
How deep?
Three hundred and eighty-five feet. My well, my well is on the lot two.
The one that you're not built on, or is that?
It's, it's the one with the house on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's showing on the Platte County Record, it's a fifty foot wide easement for Mandy Lane. Now, that's what the easement is, whether the road is that wide or not, it sounds like the applicant will be putting down a twenty-four foot wide base on that road. So, I don't know if that helps or hurts the, you know, things, but it sounds like they're going to reestablish the road as it should probably have been based on a public road privately maintained.
Right.
Yeah, which will help the single road, you know, size.
Yeah, I'm just not sure there's room for that.
Well, there is, there's fifty foot wide easement there. Well, you know, people might be encroached, built, encroached upon that.
Well, my, 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 I apologize for.
Sure.
But the Northern Lights power poles run right down the middle of that fifty foot easement.
Yeah, they'll have to, they move those things or go underground.
Okay.
Typically, when there's a development, something, you know, they look at that or they see. It's, that area is tough, right? Like, obviously, there's a lot of small roads up there and they've been there for a long time.
Right.
But yeah, I appreciate your, 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 thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is there a Bart? Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would, could you put that one slide and have the color parcel on it?
The one with the blue parcel?
Yeah, real bright color. Well, no, the other one, that one, anyway, my name is Bart Kloninger. We live, we have parcel, five acres right here. And I invite you guys to come up there and look at it before you sign off on it if you are, because these parcels, even though they look small, there's not a house on these parcels, most of those parcels are combined for one resident. And when you come out here, that's an awful lot of parcels, a lot of residences that are coming out on the Reader Bay Road. And this is a double yellow. So it's, it's, it's pretty high traffic already, there's multiple driveways all along here where people are coming out with boats, dogs, kids, bikes, so that's a problem. The other concern, this is my biggest concern, I have a six hundred and seventy foot deep well. I have a half a gallon a minute. Water is a problem. And if it goes less than that, you know, that's a big problem for us. So, yeah, those are, those are issues, in Mandy Lane, you know. There's just not enough ingress and egress for this type of thing, there shouldn't be multiples up there, and I think Bennett owned a couple parcels here at one time, he could have shot it out. But, you know, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Tammy? May I speak?
No, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in, oh, Jennifer, you like speaking?
Thanks, Jennifer. So, I'm not sure. So, good evening, my name is Jennifer Ekstrom, I work with Idaho Conservation League, and I appreciate the opportunity to engage in this dialogue. And I also appreciate the comments and conversation we've been hearing around drinking water, wetlands, wildlife, I think these are all really valid concerns and conversations to be having prior to an approval of a subdivision. But I'm here in particular to express my concern about, about the sewage treatment. The applicant is seeking approval for nineteen lots, and the Granite Reader Water and Sewer District's will serve letter indicated that service beyond fourteen lots may or may not be available, and that until an updated facilities plan is released, that question will remain unanswered. And so I'd like to ask the commissioners to look at page two of the exhibit that I passed around, I highlighted a few lines that are very relevant to these comments. And so again, I assert that it's premature for the zoning commission to approve nineteen lots when possibly only fourteen sewage connections will be allowed. Gaining adequate sewage treatment approval before the subdivision approval would protect the residents of Bonner County and visitors, and would help ensure Priest Lake continues to provide the high-quality drinking water, habitat, and recreation opportunities that we are so fortunate to have in our region. I would also assert that it would protect the developer in, in from the possibility of getting further down the road and spending more money and then having to go back to the drawing board and turn nineteen lots into fourteen lots. I'm also concerned about the possibility that this type of pre-approval of a subdivision before having adequate sewage approved, that it may put our agencies like Panhandle Health or the Granite Readers Sewer and Water District in a position where they feel pressured to approve something that they're not comfortable with. So improperly treated sewage is a significant contributor to water pollution that none of us want in our waterways. And this pollution can contribute to toxic algae blooms, which even the gem of Priest Lake is not immune to. Just last summer in Outlet Bay, there was a public health advisory to stay out of the water in Outlet Bay due to toxic algae bloom. I ask that you decline to approve the Woods at Priest Lake subdivision application unless the Granite Reader Water and Sewer District approves all nineteen connections, or unless the application is amended to meet the district's current stated capacity. Again, thanks so much for the opportunity to engage, and thank you for your service.
Jennifer, does anybody have any questions? Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to make a comment? Is there anybody online who would like to make a comment? We had someone online with their hand up, but then I hit that down, so I don't know. If you're online, want to make your comment, you'll see this, okay? Go ahead. You're muted on your end, Scott. Scott, can you unmute yourself?
All right. Hello?
Now you're there.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm doing it on my, on my cell phone, and anyway, my name is Scott Olin. And our property up in Priest Lake is at two seventy Shadow Brook Lane, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the easement. And the plans Bennett Properties have disregarded our, our legal easement in this plat documents that was submitted to Bonner County. Our easement goes through Bennett Properties, Priest Lake West, lots one, two, and three, and also the Woods at Priest Lake, proposed Woods at Priest Lake. Our easement's a mile long, it starts at Mandy Lane, and it's our only entrance to our house. And so we have great concerns having the only way in, and also for, you know, fire or for any kind of emergency that it remains open. The easement is seventy years old, we've been using, we've maintained this road and operated this road for seventy years, our families. There's two owners at the end down at Reader Bay, it's our only way that we can get in. Our concern is we've already been locked out of the road. And our concern that the easement is honored, and we'd also would like to see we also like to see the, the plans resmitted with, with our legal easement incorporated into the survey. We'd also like to see that our easement is, is unchanged. It was brought up in the meeting that there was, it was another entrance to, to the road as fault. The entrance that he brought up, it's through Elkins, it's a private HOA road, and we do not, do not have access to that road. So the easement coming from Mandy Lane, the one mile down to our property is our only way in and our only way out. And so we'd like, you know, the plans be redone with that, our easement currently put in, those plans. And that's all I have, just wanted to bring that up, and anybody had any questions in easement, I could answer them.
I, I do have one question, Scott.
Yeah.
Currently, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a county map myself.
Yep.
Does your, currently, are you not using Lodge, Lodge Pool Lane to get down to your property right now?
Use what lane?
Lodge, Lodge Pool?
No, there's, there's a, there's a Forest Service road that goes from, from Nordman. It's over the hill, and that is gated and locked, and we cannot use that road.
Okay.
Yeah, there's only one way in, and that's the easement that we've had for seventy years.
And Scott, this is Commissioner Webster, are you driving there now, or do you walk, how do you access?
We're driving in now, he's finally let us access to our property. And, because we produce the easement. And Bonner County has a copy of the easement to planning department. And we're driving, it's, you know, it's, we, and it goes through Stenson, Stenson Lumber property also, we have an easement with them. And that's the only way in and out, we have two, there's, there's actually four dwellings, it's down in Reader Bay. And that's the only way we've come in and the only way we've come out for seventy years, and we want it to remain open, you know. So, but also, we'd like to see that drawn into the plans. And Bennett, they were very much aware of the easement, and we were just really concerned when we got a copy of the plans, we did not see the easement drawn in.
Scott, with that easement drawn in and kind of going through the lots like they're talking about, it sounds like it's going to be a fifty foot wide easement, that's my interpretation, if it didn't have a description of the width. If that's, if that's maintained and kept, is that something you're happy with, right?
We just want the existing, the road kept open, and.
Apographe, it's really hard to see a road there, like a trail, or is it, is it?
It's a road, it's a road.
Okay.
Yes, it's a road, we submitted to you, there's a picture of the road. And also we submitted drawings of the road, so you should have a copy of that there.
Yeah, I believe we're, we're looking at that right now.
Okay.
And okay, well, and I think what's going to happen, the applicant or their representatives is going to go ahead and address that as well. Because I believe that was one of the conditions that they, they said that they were going to acknowledge that easement. So we'll get them to reiterate that.
Okay, what I was saying, but also I want to see it on, I'd like to see it on approved plans before anything goes forward.
Yeah, and this is a preliminary plat, this, the, the actual plat is going to have that, what happened. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else on the evening?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner, was there anything you want to discuss before we, as far as we go?
My computer is almost non-functional. There was a lobby here that where somebody was talking about people wanting to access across their yard, something to that, good, is that something you can speak to in your rebuttal? That would be helpful.
Okay, all right.
We'll ask some questions.
Okay, I don't know if the applicant or the representative is ready to.
Yeah, can I see what was?
Yeah, yeah. So these are two maps I assume was submitted by a client.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was.
Yeah, go ahead. So we're gonna go into the rebuttal portion right now, so public testimony is 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 done with. So what's gonna happen now is the applicant representative is gonna be able to go ahead and re- rebut this as well as plenty of staff's gonna make additional comments and we all have the ability to ask questions as well, so go ahead.
Uh thank you, Travis Howler, again, uh way he and associates. Um thank you for those public comments, appreciate it, uh understand exactly where you guys are coming from. Um uh I wanna address Ty first. Um uh Manny Lane is a fifty foot right away, um not saying that um that is anything, that's just fifty foot public right away. I have been down Manny Lane, I completely agree with you, it is a terrible route. Um yeah, very difficult. Um the problem with that is that we don't own Manny Lane. I would love to bring it up to some sort of standard where two cars can go by. Um Roden Bridge was the one who reviewed this and they're the ones that I believe is would be the ones that I would talk to. Um because we can only control Brown Bear Drive, what we own. And so that's where the sixty foot right away comes in, that's Roden Bridge is like, oh, bring it up to this standard. Um and then they said, you know, uh because of that, they want us to improve a little bit of Manny. Uh the owners agreed to that. Um but um I I we can't do anything outside of what we own. Uh meaning we can't do anything to Manny Lane being a public road without Roden Bridge, does that make sense?
Well.
I I just, oh, okay, alright, I just, um. Uh the telephone poles, yes, if they're, they, Northern Lights is very good, they're a big powerhouse company. They know exactly where they can and can't put their poles. Um you talked about the hazard uh with fire and again, obviously, you know, the owners are living back here, they don't, they wanna way out. Uh the easement is uh the fire uh is kind of what we've been thinking running with as a uh an emergency escape way. Uh if something were to happen up here and blocking this, there would be an exit out.
Where would it go after, but it doesn't matter, they'd be able to get away, that's that's what.
Um and then the water, um again, I I brought up the water, obviously, this is all dependent on water. Uh we have a a letter from a a hydrologist saying, based on his review, that uh there is enough water capacity there. I'm not a hydrologist, um if you are, I'd love to talk to you.
Travis, can I stop you there, is that letter in our?
Yep. Jennifer, thanks for coming out, I wanna address uh some of the things there. One of the, one of the beautiful things of of what this subdivision is that um we are on Granite Reader Sewer, Water and Sewer District. As a me as a planner, the best I can do is get out and go and get a will serve letter. Um the facility themselves, that's their call. Um obviously, if they don't have the capacity or the infrastructure, I I hope they would let us know. Um we have purchased a number of hookups and therefore those are legally binding. They are saying, yes, here are the hookups, uh the will serve is just that. Um uh PhD, then if, let's say we weren't able to get hookups, PhD, I know for a fact, wouldn't sign off on it unless the the lot hurt. And uh so that would be very difficult, so the saving grace there is that we are on urban sewer. Um and to comment on uh the last uh public commerce, Scott Olin's, um uh you know, um with the Priest Lake West that established these three lots here. Uh amusement was not disregarded at at all. Um uh being professional uh survey company, uh we do this all the time. Um if you look on sheet two, as I explained to Commissioner, um uh. Chris, yes, Kingsland, um that uh you know, the second page document does spell all those out. So um uh if if we can show it, we show it, if we can't, it's in there. Um regarding this new plat, uh like I stated before, um we will bring it up to much better standards than what it is now. Um uh it will be, you know, accessed off Brown Bear Drive. Um so it'll be um a lot better than what it currently is. So um again, uh it is illegal easement, we do have to show it if we can and uh we'll bring it up to the fifty feet uh wide. So um I do wanna point out for the record that um the legal document is what is legal. The drawing you have in front of you um is not a legal document. Um obviously, that's their best guess at where the road is, um but I just wanna state, we are not disregarding this at all. We're bringing it up to standards probably well above what it currently is, we're gonna make it better and we're gonna put it in. We're gonna keep Scott and McTeague's and everybody else's uh legal easement intact, so. Thank you.
You made a comment that you can't control Manny Lane and yet what I'm, what I think I'm hearing you say is that, you know, Roden Bridge said that Manny Lane had to be brought up to the standard, cause that's in their letter. And you are planning on bringing Manny Lane.
Just a portion of.
To to the standard as specified by Roden Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, what we're talking about now is out of our control, we can't design anything, I can't bring it up to a certain, uh you know, minimum. I had just have to comply with Roden Bridge, yeah.
Okay, okay, so you're putting in the money to to make that happen, you're gonna make that happen, but it doesn't show on this plat because it's not in your.
The road design, yeah, they'll be put together by the engineer and stuff, yeah. Um as a planner, I put together this flat map and I showed the right away with the the design itself of the road uh comes in a separate uh document, engineering stamped design, yeah, and which will again get reviewed by Roden Bridge and get uh get approved by them, so.
The only question I have, um Travis, so where where, what is that? Tell me when I get close.
Okay, yeah, okay, keep going north northwest.
Okay, so with that road right to there, that's the point where you're gonna you have a six foot easy from there, then if you go northwest a little bit further. Or a little bit further, yeah, right there, is that where you're gonna propose to to build an access road rep to Reader?
That's that's what Roden Bridge has told us to do.
Now, is that forty feet wide there, what is?
Uh I do not know, I think it's fifty, that's what I just measured on GIS, so probably close to that.
And is that a lot that was set aside for this purpose or?
It's public.
It's a public road.
Yeah, it's part of the public system up there.
Okay.
That's what I'm seeing on GIS.
And so I I'm kind of uh it'd be my understanding that that would be as far as probably the improvements that you're looking at doing up to that access and then out.
That's what Roden Bridge is asking, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
One more question, that's fine. The the back corner of these two um top right lots that that you can see. Uh how am I gonna say this? Um there is a road, yes, pause right there. Yes.
Yes, um it's a private road, um we can't connect to it. Um Brown Bear's here, you got houses, you know, lots in between, um there's gonna be no, no access there. I understand their thought, um when we first started this two years ago, there was, you know, um these these folks were saying, hey, this is a private road, you cannot connect to it and we were like, yeah, no, we know. Um but um just like with any private road out in the rural country, you get public coming down it thinking it's a public road and. Yeah.
That would probably be less of a problem when people actually live there and know the neighborhood than it would be now. And if you have people on lots four and five, they're probably gonna discourage people from walking across their property.
Yeah, right now, there's a gate, you know, there's a gate.
There is a gate there, okay, so it is signed.
Yes, that and that's your where your sewer.
That that's just where the sewer is coming down, yeah, the sewer for Granite Reader, the mains coming here. And then they, we, we're proposing this, we, hey, we wanna get hooked in, they want us to get hooked in, all this money. Um and but uh they also, for them, the bigger picture is getting it out, how do they get their line out here? Oh, this is all private land, hey, we'll give you this public easement, uh private easement to the public road so they can get to me. So.
And they gave you nineteen hookups, so they gave you.
They gave us a will serve layer for twenty-two hookups, twenty-two lots that they can serve.
You paid for several already, it sounded like.
Yeah, we bought, we bought more than half of those already, yeah. So, you know, once we have, once we purchased those, that's uh again.
So their current statement where they say they have fourteen, that's above and beyond what you've already capacity of purchased, so how many did you purchase?
Yeah, we we've purchased those fourteen.
Okay, but it sounded like they're, they served twenty-two, they're saying they still have fourteen, they probably had twenty-eight.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's a matter of, uh again, just the planner, you know, that we we'd have to talk to them, uh what their infrastructure is. Obviously, the the cool thing about all this is, you know, we would open it up and it all all brand new, you know, infrastructure.
I can't help with this, but assuming that for some, some reason, uh you know, they they only service fourteen lots. Like you said, Bonner Health probably are not gonna be issuing second systems.
Ab- absolutely, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's definitely hoops. Good, yeah, as far as I know, they don't have a moratorium, yeah. So.
Alright, any other questions from Travis? Alright, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Would staff like to? Have a word?
This is Swadi from Planning Department for the record. Uh the only thing that I would like to add to the sewer connection discussion is that if the applicant is not able to show us or make those improvements for twenty-two lots, their plat doesn't get recorded.
So again, why?
If if you're not able to show us improvements made for twenty-two lots, sewer connection improvements for twenty-two lots, then the plat doesn't get recorded. The final plat doesn't go through because the improvements for infrastructure have to be made before the final plat gets recorded. Or they they have to be bonded for.
So what I'm hearing you say is there's not a situation where lots would be approved that didn't have hookups, yes.
The density they're asking for is dependent on the services available, so if they can't show the services available, the density is not allowed.
And when you say if this, I mean Travis Howler again for the record, um that sewer main coming in, that would be the infrastructure that would allow.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, you keep saying the twenty-seven, I think you want twenty-two lot that or 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 we may put fourteen on that, but yeah.
So so the, yeah, the sewer main would have to be installed for all twenty-two lots. Or, yeah, or thirty lots, ninety lots in this space.
You have a question for staff? No?
Okay.
Right. Um well, I guess we'll go ahead and pose that, we're open uh to deliberations on this file.
I'd like to suggest two things and I don't know exactly how to put them but I'd like to suggest that a that the the back part of lot number thirteen, you know, a decent portion of that would be common area that would eliminate the, so alleviate some of the concerns about wetlands. It would leave that for stormwater management space and and then and then I'd like to see a situation where the education portion of the Idaho fishing game letter that was written that talks about fencing, talks about wildlife habitat, was actually put into the covenants and restrictions as just a uh an educating document for future people that buy this twenty-five years from now. Those, you know, when we are selling a property, that we look at covenants and restrictions from way back, we give these to our clients. They read them, it wouldn't necessarily be a a binding thing, but there's a lot of good information in there that people don't know. And that I think would be helpful.
Well, as far as as lot thirteen, like half that, like you mentioned, made into a common area of green space. Uh as applicants represented state, they're gonna go ahead and do a delineation on that. Um I just haven't enjoyed going through this with delineation and restaurant recording for for maybe and everything else like that. Just because it's on a map does not necessarily mean that it is wetlands, I mean, maps appear so far off. Sisters are creepers, there'd be a chance there are some wetlands, so that's gonna be delineated. The county already has a forty foot setback uh from wetland areas, um so I don't think we have to worry about that.
Would it be an economic benefit for the landowner if they don't even have to go through delineation and all of those steps? If that lot, would it really change the market value of that lot, being significantly larger than any other in there? You could chunk off a piece of it and leave that piece alone if it's gonna be at a certain sales price and that's kind of unusable, would it really significantly change the sales price to make it worth the effort of doing all those other steps?
Yeah, and I and I believe that would be that applicants probably to go ahead and consider that, take that in consideration. But again, this is just a.
Preliminary.
Preliminary on this, um. That's just my thoughts.
The difference we've been this filed, I mean, kind of slowly started this in the presentation, is that subdivisions are outright permitted given the zoning and services, right? So it's not like a conditional use permit where you're trying to find a way to add condition to mitigate concerns, it's more of a standard review. So you look over the standard reviewer, if there's a specific standard that's not accounted for in the condition, then yeah, you need a modifier or add a condition to meet that specific standard. So it makes sense, so it's really.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we don't, yeah, that, but there are conditions, there are variety of conditions.
And they say separately on the land use standards for subsidies, yeah. Like I said, it's it's a lot different than the conditional use permit where you're looking at, you know, concerns or impacts and whatnot. Um this is specifically the reviewing. I mean, by state law, there's not even a a hearing requirement for sub- for subsidies, it's just an auto. So it is a checker box, does it meet everything, does it meet the standards within the code, and if it does, then it's permitted, if it doesn't, then it's not.
It's still a good learning opportunity for people who are putting something forward and, you know, you're in a neighborhood. So how your neighbors feel about something and how it brings people together or drives them apart, how it is maybe valuable in the conversation, if I don't have a line to put that on, then I understand that, thank you, Jake.
Yep, you know, I think of green space or that type of thing is is a benefit to the whole subdivision. You know, knowing that there is that, you know, it mitigates a little bit, you know, the wildlife situation is gonna be totally disrupted by this. You know, we all live somewhere. You know, one of the concerns I have is, and and it's not really part of the 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 process with the the water situation, the groundwater situation, just hearing a couple people saying they got a half a gallon. Gallon and a half a minute, is that, have you guys drilled a well on that property yet? I mean, that's, you can't do this without water.
They like. But what I was gonna say is there is a letter from their hydrologist.
Yeah, but. But when you start drilling seven hundred foot dry wells.
Yeah. It might be dry camp.
It's a risk.
It's a risk.
Yeah, I mean, I've done subdivision before and, you know, you know, multi lot subdivision and we just, you know, for our own uh you know, peace of mind, we drilled a well and we kept going and going and going. My God, we're, you know, we weren't getting any water. And finally, the well driller said, well, I've got ten more feet of pipe, let's just go ten more feet, we're gonna stop certainly. We went ten more feet and came out. So waters will be assigned, but yeah.
So so then Swadi can can I ask a question and maybe it's just for my own education, but Swadi, when you said that um this is conditional upon getting those Granite Reader sewer hookups, is the same in place for the water? Is there a a condition that that water be provided before the final plat approval happens?
So providing shared bus will.
So providing shared wells would be a condition of improvements.
It's providing meaning that they're actually drilled and shown to be.
Putting in shared wells, yes.
Okay.
But I don't think we have a production standard in the code.
It's, it's a part of the improvements plan, yes, yeah.
It's relied upon the review of the hydrologist or, or engineer, so, okay. We don't have, no, it's not like a X number of gallons per minute or it's low rate or in front of that grounds, we don't have a separate.
Yeah, we.
So, so Jake, what I'm hearing you say is that, is that final approval happens based on this groundwater availability report. And it, and it doesn't happen when wells are drilled, then wells are drilled subs after the final approval?
No, wells are drilled after the preliminary plat approval. Because that is when the improvements are made.
Shared well.
Shared wells, not individual wells, shared wells.
Okay.
Because individual wells are private improvements, we don't ask for private improvements on subdivisions. We ask for budget improvements to be made on some divisions.
And so six of these wells wouldn't be required to be drilled prior.
Prior to.
But the shared well ones would, and the, and the lot sizes are adjusted based on that. Thank you for educating me. I appreciate that.
Anything else to add here? The, the common space, um, comments and discussion, if we were looking at a plan year development with densities. You know, specified and based upon those type of factors, then yes, that's something to, to discuss and, and to analyze and to, to review about. In this case, it's not a planned development, it's a, a settlement. So that is kind of a, yes, it can be part of the discussion given the file. And they also have any comments they'd like to make, or is anybody ready to make a motion?
Ready to make a motion, uh, recommend for approval. I move to recommend approval of file, project file S zero 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 one dash point two. Requesting replating of approximately ten point two eight acres of flat Atlanta zone recreation. Into nineteen residential lots located in section nineteen, township sixty-one north. Range four west, poison your redeem, Bonner County, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in the Florida Bonner County revised code as enumerated following. Conclusions of law based upon the evidence submitted at the time, at the, up to the time of the staff report. Was prepared in testimony received at the steering, I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the staff report. Or as amended during this session. Or during this hearing, uh, indirect planning staff to drop written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all the arrested parties, the action does not result in taking a private property. The action that could be taken, uh, to obtain preliminary plat is to complete the conditions of approval as stock.
Here we have a motion to go ahead and approve this file S zero zero one dash two two. Question replat, is there a second on, uh?
Commissioner Waitley, second, welcome.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? It'll make a little call to my right.
Commissioner Kingsland, I.
Commissioner Webster, I.
Commissioner Lynn Scott, I. Report, we're in that. Wish I had a gallon. So there you go. So now we have, uh, chairman, Marvel come back and, right now, sir.
That was stuff I brought, but it's all part of the file, so it can, I don't need it. The neighbors all left. It might be nice to share your water availability report with them. If you care, but they have concerns about their water, and I think that what came out in this helps alleviate some of that concern. I'm always a big fan of. You know, I've lived here forever. I went to Pre-Slake Elementary School. I learned how to swim in Pre-Slake. And it always makes me happy to see neighbors be happy with neighbors. And when they have their concerns addressed, so thanks, then they. See everything through. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just giving that from this side of the bench. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Marvel has, uh. Retaking control. Control of this meeting from, uh, Mr. Stuck. And awards, uh, one point three to Lynn Scott for successfully, uh, very vile. Our next file tonight is S three dash twenty-two subdivision. Uh, we have ground same wire, Gloria. For eight, fourth and fifth edition, applicants are requesting flat eighty acres of unflattered land. You are requesting to flat eighty acres of unflattered land into sixteen five big parcels. The property is on rural five, the project is located Hunter Road, a public right of way in section sixteen, township four north, range five west, four. Many commissioner have, uh, conflict of interest, right, parking communications is showed at this time. The one thing I think we should disclose is this, this file was brought up here in a zone change file before this board, what, a couple weeks ago, I think. So the details of that weren't discussed, it was just a, this is coming, you're aware, so. Alright, Swati, thank you.
This is Swati from planning department. Uh, this is a request to plot approximately eighty acres of unflattered land into sixteen residential lots. I apologize for the math. But the preliminary stat is, is included in your files and you've all seen it. Um, the property is currently unflatted, it is approximately eighty acres in size, it is zone rural five and has a land use designation of rural residential. Parcels have direct access to and frontage on Hunter Road, which is a county-owned but privately maintained public road. It does not contain any steep slopes of over thirty percent grade, does not contain any wetlands or water bodies. Two types of soil are present, one of them is classified as prime farm and if irrigated, the other one is all areas are prime farm. Parcels are located within flood hazard zone X, uh, this project would not require any further flood plain review. Uh, as per Idaho Department of Fish and Game, some wildlife may be present in the vicinity of this subdivision, but. No critical wildlife habitats are present, present as per any, uh, public agencies. This is the map that shows, um, wetlands and slopes around, as we can see, there are no wetlands or slopes on this property. Or any water bodies. The site is going to be served by individual septic tanks, individual water tanks, wells. Uh, inland park, Spirit Lake Fire District, West Bonner School District eighty-three, Bonner County Ambulance District, Pondry Hospital District. Uh, several public agencies were notified of this request on June twenty-eighth. These agencies are listed on the screen over here. These agencies commented on the file and Bonner County Road and Bridge comment was not included in your staff report. Uh, it has been updated on this presentation, and I will briefly go over their comments as well. So Road and Bridge recommends that the applicant be required to improve Hunter Road. To the local road aid standards as listed in the Bonner County Road Standards Manual. They will be required to get encroachment permits from Hunter Road. And they also require a note to be made on the plat that says. This road shall be maintained at the sole expense of the property owners. Until such time as it is improved to county standards for public maintenance at the property owner's sole expense and so on. It is included in your folder now. This comment is included in the public agency folder. We also got a comment from, um, Department of Environmental Quality, they replied with a standard comment. They do not review projects on a case-by-case basis, but, uh, if anybody needs to see what improvements. They should be making on the innovations, they can go through their standard manual to look at, uh. What improvements to be made. Then we received another comment from Idaho Department of Fish and Game. They comment on the potential effects on wildlife and wildlife habitat and how those impacts could be mitigated. They propose, um, implementing a wildlife-friendly subdivision design. They also say that none of the area is currently considered critical wildlife here. And the department will not be responsible for losses of domestic animals. They recommend retaining as much standing timber or natural vegetation as possible. Uh, they also recommend mid-story vegetation. Uh, they further recommend, uh, using wildlife-friendly fencing. Uh, and that. They note that further development in the area may increase hazard to both game and drivers. They make general wildlife considerations for residential development. As recommendations to the file. Idaho Department of Water Resources again takes no proposal on this development. But they do list a few things that have to be done before people can get wells on the property or. If the wells were to exceed a certain limit of use, they would be required to get more permits from Idaho Department of Water Resources. Inland Power replied with no comments. Panhandle Health District say that if the sanitary restriction is to be lifted from this plat, they would be required to submit the land development application to them and. Get the plat approved with septic systems, uh. That's the only comment that we have. We did not receive any other comments from any other public agencies. Uh, we did not receive any public comments either. And again, these are the standards against which this file was reviewed. These are all the standards review, again, the, uh, where, wherever you see that red text which says conditions of approval. Uh, everything that they, that, that, that this subdivision doesn't need now, they will have to make these updates. Before, uh, the plat gets approved at the final stage or even moves to the final plat stage. After a lengthy review of this file, staff found that the project is consistent with the Bonner County revised stone. Including standards review, findings of fact, conditions of approval and conclusions of law. And staff recommends approval with conditions. The findings of fact for this file have not changed since the staff report was last prepared. Um, some of the important points here are. That rural pipe zoning permits creation of five acre parcels, five acre or larger parcels. With individual well and individual septic systems that have been proposed as part of the subdivision. Um, a groundwater quantity report was also submitted along with this, uh, subdivision. An improvements plan, a preliminary improvements plan was submitted as part of the application, which was reviewed by Bonner County Engineering. And Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. Again, they made a list of conditions, those conditions would have to be met before the final plan gets approved. And those improvements would have to be put in place before the subdivision finally gets approved or gets, gets recorded. Uh, all proposed lots will have direct access and frontage onto the proposed private road, so the internal road is going to be a private road, which will be developed. To the appendix A road standards, uh, while the main road that runs through, through the subdivision. North, south is, um, is going to be a public road privately maintained. Road. And this plat does meet the standards of Bonner County devised code as indicated in standards review and conditions of approval. The conclusions of law have not changed like that since the, since the last time the staff report was prepared. Again, we have a list of, a huge list of conditions with all the things that improvements are, updates that this applicant has to make before. The subdivision can proceed, including sanitary restriction, fire suppression. Road design and profile and pre-updating the roads to the standards, the county road standards. Uh, validity of the preliminary that up to two years. Again, making the improvements before the subdivision gets recorded, uh, and if those improvements are not being made, they have to be bonded for. The final plat requirements don't apply at this stage, but once the final plat is submitted, these are some of the things that they would have to do along with everything else. That is there for final plat, uh, in the code. And these are some, again, some standard conditions. For the plat to move from preliminary to the final plat stage. That concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions at this time. I have to clarify that, that was not a late arriving comment, that was a comment that was. Uh, received on the improvements plan review, which was not put in the public agency folder. But it was received in, some, sometime in July, July sixth, yes, it was not a late review.
Yes.
Well, good evening. For the record, Steve Circle, Tri-State Consulting Engineers. Address one one three five eight, North Government Way, Hayden, Idaho. Uh, yeah, I am here on behalf of my client, uh, for your, Brian Poyer, for your family trust. I wanna thank, uh, you guys for being here, and we did, if you do recall, we were, I was before you with, uh. Mr. Poyer's nephew just about a month ago with his own change, so. Um, we have, uh, reviewed the. Conditions of approval, we reviewed this year, your staff report. Um, to just kind of reiterate a couple of things, uh, we do have proved, we have proven and with a hydro geological. Water evaluation that we do have a pretty good chance that we'll be able to get water, so we're not concerned about that. We can, we, we have no problems with working through the fire department and the staff to. Uh, obtain approvals for improvement plans. Um, with Bonner County, the engineering department for building the roads per the appendices as Swati has laid out, and, uh. We started this process with a, a zone change on the easterly forty acres. And now we're looking forward to bringing this forward and building the subdivision. So I can stand for any questions you may have?
So, uh, the road that was being proposed is, is actually gonna be continuing through there, is that? There was a road being built at that time to your west, I believe, of the, of that subdivision?
What we've done, we haven't built the road yet, um, the client, the owner has, uh, brought on, he's got a, a gentleman that. Works in service and maintains all their, all their properties, and they, of course, deploy your rants to the south, Blanchard. Um, what he did is he's been maintaining the property, so we came in there, we cleared it out. We thinned it out, and then he's gone through with an emasculator. Uh, but generally, we did stake in that, on the west side, we did stake where that post on, for the plat, where the proposed road will be. And he did drop those trees. And with the mindset of wanting to keep the bigger ones that we could, so that's why it appears like it was a road, but we haven't been building the road yet, we just been. He's been maintaining the property and cleaning it up.
You would got a six dollar word about the evaluation of the well prospects, you describe that process?
Well, um, in the, in the, I don't know if you've read the hydro geological report, but. What they, what, what our, I, I, our geologist does is he evaluates all the surrounding. What they, what what our I our geologist does is evaluates all the surrounding well logs in the area.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Mysterious process.
Oh, sorry. Give me the misleading.
Something like that, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Jargon words confusing.
Okay. I had a question.
Sure.
I noticed when in looking at the fact that on the east side, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of the development. And on the west side, there's not a cul-de-sac and I'm I'm assuming that's because the long-term plan is to potentially go then. Oh, okay, that's.
There's a revised. The best obviously for future.
That's what I thought for future expansion and and then it does have cul-de-sac.
There.
Right.
I mean, they they build it to here.
Yeah.
That's what he was saying, you know, it's clear. Rest of the way.
Okay.
Sounds like if they've got it on the plant.
Thank you. Missed understanding where we weren't talking.
That help?
Then Steve, if you don't mind, I would ask you, you heard me say to the other people, would you consider putting that um. The Idaho Department of Fishing Games letter as a portion of your. You know, covenants and restrictions. As education to people about those things. In the future, I mean, what do you, what do you think about that idea? Be candid, please.
Oh, absolutely, you know, it obviously, as you know, it's public, public information. And so um I know well enough with my client that. We wouldn't have any problem putting that in those documents, it's it's good to be able to educate as if you knew my client as well as I do. He spent a lot of money already just maintaining his properties, including these two eighties and of course the. Several thousand acres he owns uh south of Blanchard, so. Um they've been good stewards of their property for decades, his family have been here and born and raised here. So I don't think that would be an issue at all.
Because it seems like that letter was well written and had a lot of good information in it. And then these are documents that run with this land.
Yeah.
In the long term, so. That was, I read that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
As you receive no written comments. In that case, we will uh. Make sure that we discuss the cloud as well. Uh and share closely during public test morning and. We'll stick the rebuttal. And we'll write you the duration, make sure not to write. Very nice. Eighty acre park, very similar. And once again, around all these.
I wouldn't much rather see Stephen here with the proper subdivision than uh. And the M O P is moving for them. The hydrological report. Is. Sorry.
It was all the families in Bonner County. Here this left about four years, I mean, well, well done. I'll say that one.
Uh Commissioner Scott here, I move to recommend approval of project file F zero, 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 three dash twenty-two. Requesting plotting and of an under pressure eighty acre. Eighty acres of unfired lands on rural five into sixteen residential lots located in section sixteen and seventeen township fifty-four north range five west place Meridian. Bonner County, Bonner County, Idaho, find that it is in accord with Bonner County Vice Corps enumerated the following conclusions of law. Based upon evidence, soon up to the time the staff prepared, fair and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the staff report for as a manager in the hearing. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this section does not result in taking a private property. That actually that could be taken to obtain the plan or the plot is to complete the conditions of approval as possible.
Second.
Uh Commissioner Novo Chanel.
Commissioner Webster, I.
Commissioner Scott, I.
Commissioner Kingsland, I.
Mister Wakely, I. Commissioner novel, I. Very. By voting for your.
Jake, can I make one comment?
Yeah.
The last time that Steve was there, I didn't feel comfortable about losing that property, the thing that I felt was very concerning. Is that I didn't feel that it had adequate roads in the area um and. Had that file come behind this style or this inaccessible. In that conversation, I would have felt very differently about that. Because I feel like you're going about it in a way that's providing. Um adequate access, quality roads and and improving center road to. Place that is that meets the the needs of the area and isn't just um. Degrate the road from people who'd already put a lot of investment in that, so I just. Wanted to share that's why I was uncomfortable and. So for reverse, I would have thought.
Oh, I'll start that with Mr. Keller. Chair Warren, one point you vote Dave, who's Steve's.
I did vote Nate on the reason. Because. Didn't feel that.
Uh show those things the director, chair reminder, the things that happens for you learn. Absolutely.
It's a different place once this is.
Exactly. Oh, he's just.
What I missed the points, what?
The bottom of the notes. He's like a tally, let's.
Start showing up, start checking. Jake, I want to say thank you to you for um educating, taking them time to educate. Us, myself especially, I feel like there's a lot of things that are going on in here that are very important to people's lives and their investments. And if I don't understand, I've tried hard to come up to speed on that, but it is really helpful when Swati comes forward and. Says how this goes, and then it was unfortunate when she thought that. Septic approval happened and then I'm glad, thank you, that you stepped in and said, no, septic approval is currently not tied into. M O into M O or building location permits, something the last meeting and it was.
I do have a PhD next week. Using these conversations. So it's fine. Um initially, just a little bit update on that, I think last time we got with them was. Late winter, at least spring. Before the push, right, we get our queues rushed this time. So uh. They wanted to resume conversation play somewhere that follows up. But we will consider putting him at the beginning of the B L P process prior petitions that you'll be. What our initial goal was is to prior to filing house allocation permit is have them on the checklist to review. Uh B L P's along the line, so rather than holding people up and starting with construction, hold up the finalization. So that that was our initial idea, it worked better with, I think, the flow. Um and it doesn't slow down B L P's here, but we'll see how that goes um.
Either way, that lets the public know that this is something they have to do and that is.
So um just kind of a little bit of an update, as this is the end of July and we're just. Um we're at nine hundred and fifty-four permits versus eleven hundred and fifty-six last year at the same time, so you can see we have a slowdown. Twenty twenty numbers with seven three at the same time, so we didn't want to line. Six thirty-five to go back, so we are definitely above the five year average, but we've seen numbers. We have about fifty-seven different land use files, um some of those county driven, not many, but most of them are. Where we have files for the zoning mission, you guys say about September now. And then our first hearing examiner meeting is the seventeen minutes, I'm choosing two subdivision files. If what's different is on the subdivisions. You guys don't have the authority to the coach and make the decisions on board and class. And ask me to recommend to the board, board with the second year, hearing examiner makes a decision in their class. Why for that way, I don't know, but that's just, that's how, that's the. So um it includes the county, but the state statute doesn't acquire. All the preview of subdivision files. Correct, final butts all have to go, so you see those on consent agenda, it's often on Tuesday mornings before. Um so final touch of any type of land division um have to go to to the board. So the data required, um sure.
And the idea behind that probably is that if the public hearing is first, then things that are brought up, it's a public hearing can be incorporated.
Public hearing in my seat. Why do we do it? Yeah, that's a dangerous question, okay. I don't know, um. Interesting.
Technically, if you look at it, subdivisions is like getting the real in your property, getting a good location permit, because that is something. Permitted on the property by right, if you bought the property and settled the zoning, you had that. With certain rights came with that company, by that company. And subdivision is just one of those rights, just like getting the real. You have to go through the process. Through the county process or the city process that even they went. But it's still a right that came with the law.
Does state right or county? Oh.
Well, because state has subdivision standards too and. It's aware who prepares the plan, they don't just have to follow our standards, they have to follow the state's standards as well.
Yeah, and I agree the the whole reason for that. Because as you said, whether it's a subdivision um or a minor land division or. Family split, it has to meet its own committed use. And so we've kind of swung in my opinion. From these property rights that were permitted to, but we gotta get everybody's. And. And so I believe that's a kind of, that was the reason I was there when we got ahead and approved the minor wind region process what eight years ago, seven years, but how many years it was. It's because you do have standards in violence. Um real adjustments, family splits and on these and subdivision, they have the zone that's still located. Not everything has to have condition.
If what's presented doesn't match the code, they can be conditioned. That's always all of the subdivision sign, right? So on the developer's mindset, does it make sense to go drill a bunch of wells and and hope that it helps to the primary fire approval? Maybe, right? It's kind of a catch twenty-two of. How much money do you invest in the property before you know you can buy it? So I I get both sides of that climate to um yourself. Yeah, so that's what the conditional approval is of the primary flat, and if those conditions are met, the final flat doesn't pass the.
Well, and it it seems to me, you know, when I read about public hearings and things that we're we're looking for information from the public, sometimes we do get. Information brought forward that other otherwise wouldn't be known and that can be helpful moving along, I agree with you that. The the preliminary is, okay, I think I can do this, they're pretty good. You know, I've I've gotten all my questions answered, now go forward and do the work, it. I've had a lot of people, heard a lot of people say, say no to this because you haven't done these other things. Well, that's kind of what we've done because we said yes, if you do these other things. So that's no, you don't, so. But it it. I think it's important that people feel like they have. Fair process. So I'm glad that we have hearings for.
Well, the current drive requires that that gets changed from the user. Seventeen, at what time will that, uh one thirty, one thirty P M, yeah, so it's. The hearing examiner schedules opposite of the board hearings, they do the first and third, the hearing thing with the second court. Uh Wednesday at one P M. I think she has a couple of variances on her place and some of the subdivisions. You hear four miles to.
Upstairs or down?
And well, that and that's the same procedure where she, you don't say, you don't put conditions on. You just say yes or no, this or the there are, there are only the conditions that are in the code, it's not like a conditional use permit. That's only the conditions from code.
Pretty much. Everything that boils down from the code and that. Becomes a set of conditions that the.
It's simply a standard. That'd be on that. YouTube, yeah, the same procedure, same how we set this up and so on.
But you only have.
One thirty, so I don't even have to hear it, right? Or like other, I'll say some, maybe some others. And I went looking at this same time last year, so we've received so far this year fifteen zone change applications compared to thirty-one the same time last year. These year, huge jump path, right, with zone change applications. Um seventy-seven M L Bs versus a hundred and thirty this time last year. So again, just just over half. Five regular, we currently have five regular flats and four short flats, short flats about the same we have this this time last year, regular flats are much higher. So we have a sixty-eight lot.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, that's probably the biggest one we've seen in, I don't know, how many?
Seven.
Seven, yeah. Um the conference, the plan updates, the first step of that is moving forward as it was laid out in plan. Um so there was a public workshop, workshop open to public comment on Tuesday, there's another one in two weeks, um and when the hearing is.
The sixty-four lot is out on water.
Yeah, it's on.
It's it's actually, so this is from the city, city of Wurundjeri. So it's better order. Would be from provided by the.
We'll get into details, because they come up with these guys when they're gone.
Yes, I guess, sorry about that.
Well, they're not making the decisions, so it's not.
Okay.
So yeah, it's. So.
Yeah.
As far as staffing updates, so. Uh we started recruiting, or we'll start recruiting next week for the compliance manager position with short staff and our. On our compliance side, losing a manager, we got a number of people hanging out on the issues, so B L P's processing is still down. It's just that I mean, somewhere where everyone wants to go, they do shimmer for us two, three, four. And then uh it's assistant director position, we just started recruiting for it, you know, zero applicants in two days and. Really hoping someone was just.
Man someone from.
Yeah. Uh. Yeah, the problem.
It just creates another hole, dominoes. So people in here are like, come on, that was uh.
So despite having a decline in all of our land use files, we need the B L Ps, we, I think just yesterday, we put our revenue projection for the year. So now we can, now the end of this year, it's gravy, it's great. So we'll see how, this is the biggest push this time of the year, usually see a slowdown. Uh in September and in the.
Kind of the dog, do this of summer. Gets a little reprieve and then and then winter is coming and we jump back into action.
Yes.
You guys are missing the beach, boys. You're standing outside here. I don't know if Brian Wilson's there, I don't think he's there. I think there's one, a one original member, right?
So that's all I have, um. And essentially your theme is. The board is is in full speed on budget right now, they will go from B O Es to budget. It's it's still best.
And do they look at your department as a revenue source? Kind of like go team, make those numbers?
Yes.
Kind of, it it seems to me that that would be a service and not necessarily a. Revenue source, but.
So there are, I have a finance background, so there are, it's called enterprise funds, which are truly, this is the bucket. And all the money you can have a bucket season that button, so solid waste is one of those, they can't take revenue from a general fund. Right, so it's it's enterprise, it's everyone's self. Um planning. They like it to be that way, right, that all of our revenues um account for all our expenses, that often isn't all easy, this. Yeah, I think we're within a couple hundred thousand dollars of our expenses, we'll see what happens. So this is the final revenue drums and. Expenses.
I think you make more running than you budget.
I think if you make more revenue than your budget, it it doesn't stay in the plan.
It does.
It does for next year?
We can. So I heard that it goes to like.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll get nicer tacos.
These, I would say these tacos were nice. I didn't have any, but they smelled good and. Food I would definitely. Yeah.
Always open suggestions. That's the most difficult conversation we have every two weeks is going for dinner.
For dates.
Yeah.
We we never, we'd never gotten dinner years ago. How do I get them? Good, you say?
I did have like a a stimidial thing with like twelve different options. We would do that. And now we don't have soup.
Where you, where do you get soup?
Uh super wide. So usually I like.
Well, I guess there's there's weather for soup, August and not weather for soup.
I got I got soup and you're like, who is this?
Um so have any file, you say we're booked out to September, but I imagine a lot of those files are going to go to the hearing.
We try not to put too much on her place. It's it's the first time. So we're we're given so many files. Um and we can schedule officially during the third weekend. Um depending on the workforce. I'm assuming by, you know, April next year, when we start getting a bit of personal energy, so we have done a number of hearings that have been more or less shift everything off your end.
Currently, you guys have two files for the next two meetings.
Okay.
Do you know who that is?
What? I don't, I don't need dinner personally. I was more worried about you guys.
Proven that we could stretch out some.
And I wonder.
I love this.
Does that, if we're looking at the budget and the bucket, that, you know, is is she going to be here or she on Zoom?
She'll be there.
She'll be there. And is that cost effective when you have volunteers? Luke's just telling me all the time how much he wishes he spent more time here.
So there's.
He doesn't have anything else to do.
I mean, they're paid hourly, right? So any any overtime that costs a hell of an extra.
Right.
The the staff time and the extra costs of that. Um we've implemented a hearing on our feet uh that goes along with this, any review I've been examining, so it's a couple of that costs. All the commissioners might have to be able to go back to the B schedule and update it to exactly what she could do. So we've all had the knowledge. Now, music, so. Um so no.
It actually saves mine. The applicant pays that.
Applicant pays the. Quick update on on B L P is just kind of a heads up. We, last time I checked, it was about two weeks ago, we've been, we administered, administered with nine sixteen percent of the applications so far this year. That simply um it didn't meet the code that was adjusted last August. So we feared a lot of others saying, you're still root for those. You've denied a number of those, of which I think you've had five appeal. Um three. They have they have held two of them. No, we've had seven of them. And they upheld two of the denials. They overturned three of the miles and Wednesday next week there's two more. Uh but that's, so that's just kind of an update. We we are denying often um some of those files. Um this one. They uh the last subdivision, they initially wanted to do two short class, thanks to each other. So no, it doesn't. So they. Well, that would have been an easy mile or so. Certainly, go, these two cash.
The word in the public is that, you know. Passes everything.
Chad just told me he has a zone change recommended denial on uh coming up in the new future. We recommend a denial on complaint amendments and passes. So.
Typically, if you recommend denial, they didn't pay here.
I I mean, people still have the right. We oftentimes will. It doesn't look like this is one of a lifestyle. Go read your file.
Okay.
You deny a lot of requests on the phone.
Yeah.
A lot of requests on the.
You can't do that.
If you want to put in money.
You can.
To do that, yeah.
But if it clearly doesn't.
It's nice how helpful you guys are. I'm like literally taking the man, walking him through it and finding out like this is a good idea, right? You know, it's it really does help a lot of the a lot of the tape.
Yeah, maybe some extra transparency will help some of these people who are have perception that that they're rubbish. Process.
You should have a YouTube channel. Here's all the people that say.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put a weather next to a horse every day we did.
There you go.
Yeah.
And that's the thing, you know, a lot of uh people you're educating along the way. So when the when your staff reports come here, they're all, you've gone through the steps and they, you know, they're, most people are not going to bring a denial, you know? And so, of course, we look like we have a high percentage pass rate because we have had you know, a staff with a competent go through everything and already weed out the trash.
Right.
And I'm trying to tell people that, Luke, what you just said, but I think it's really I think it's really helpful when you guys have take that opportunity in front of you to share that information. Um there, we are working kind of from behind on having some people have a perception. And the more that there's transparency, the more we can fight that perception, the more that specific instances are explained. And the code is laid out there. I personally would say I have learned much on being in here. And I'm trying to share that with the people that I interact with, who many of whom have a lot of concerns. And the more that we know, you know, there there will always be some people, I think, who who enjoy the drama of sharing concerns, but I think there are a lot of people who have real concerns. And and then and the information is not there. So that's that's really helpful when you share that and say, you know, this week we had the disappointing duty of turning away thirty percent of the people that came through the door, whatever.
I was just thinking, I think Daniel tracked how many he recommended on a file and some shows. We don't turn them away, right? We don't have the authority to say.
Just say.
No, but you helped them.
I think he had chat tracked like twenty-five or something, and we only received seven to the application. That would really help for the revenue side. We said, come on, apply.
Well, I would say, I would say thank you. And it's not. I would push back on it being revenue. I mean, it's Bonner County, we're working for our constituency's trust and faith, and we're working for the long-term benefit of Bonner County. It's nice that you make money.
Yeah.
Thank you, but that's not as important as doing the right thing.
I we we had a good conversation today with some developers looking at doing some commercial development and by the end of the conversation, they were just really grateful. You guys seem to have the answers. Staff are very professional. We had five, so let's plan it in the room. And we get to this thing where we start debating and go around like, well, what about this? What about that? People on the screen, it's a zoom call. It's hot. By the end of it, like, okay, well, this is what we recommend, and this is this is how we could proceed. We think staff could support it, give it minutes. Um you could go this way, you could go that way, you could lock it, right? Um by the end of it, he was asking, so you have, you guys look like a really fun group to work with. You have the opening department. So that was, I think, probably the biggest help that I got in the last couple of weeks to school. It was, it was.
That's good. Professional people are, you know, giving you a.
We asked him, he was good with young people.
Culture.
It is.
Everything.
Uh there's been some recent uh confusion over like new water systems. Tonight, you guys recommended approval on a subdivision with a shared well, right? And I guess uh and then there's been some confusion from the public as to a shared well and what constitutes the women's urban water. So that was a good example of what urban water is. Improved base conditioning, you know? Um for services of what, seven lots?
That no, that's where I'm in lots are.
Right, determines against it and you're getting how small of a lot you can get based on.
Looks like a rough area for water. I'd be nervous if I was.
And again, if they drill well, maybe nothing like.
Yeah. What are they gonna do?
Go home with no water.
So. Elaborate on that if you don't mind, the shared well and how the shared well is urban water.
So.
Doesn't need to be a system until you have over three, you three.
Ten. Ten is when um you you get.
So. The way our board defines urban services is any private or public water system interesting or proposed water system. That's urban services according to the code that I think. In that shared well, shared well is a private water system, has been defined as a private water system that is that could be shared between two to nine lots. Anything beyond nine lots goes, becomes a public utility facility, like the one that we heard before. I did host to D U and V H D and several other agencies currently. Between two to nine lots is still a shared well system is still an urban service, a water urban service.
I was so off. I thought that it, once you had a third house or a third home hooked up to a well, you had to do testing. But that's not the case, right? Okay, that's when you get over. Over nine, a big limit. Yeah, yeah. I I actually thought it was well.
So does that, so in order to be considered an urban water system, does it have to actually be drilled and producing water?
No, just like we saw, they have to provide a water availability for someone, hydrologist or a geologist saying that it's enough water in the ground. It'd be so.
They go on.
So three lots or nine lots or ten lots. They have to provide us that letter and they have to, they can, it's not a requirement for where to share well agreement, but they can.
Right, and a shared well agreement would show who maintains it. Um you know, how often it gets the the how often it gets tested, isn't, is there um any adjustment in that under nine lots? So. That's a private system.
It goes to public system where it's larger than you have more testing.
Right, and nine lots is the cutoff on that.
So we can take an example of uh.
No, I'm I'm interested in what you're saying.
We can take an example of like urban water association or might as well to population. They are, what are they? They are just just have big well serving more than one lots, but it's essentially the same thing. It's urban water.
They're definitely urban water. I mean, they have, they regularly test that. It runs in mains. It's not like I have selling real estate, I've seen a variety of shared wells. Shared wells are just like a good well on your own property, only worse because you share it with your neighbor. So then you've got to figure out, do I have enough water? Who's using it? Where's the power coming from? If I have a holding tank or a cistern, then there's a whole nother plethora of issues with coliform and a variety of things that can get into your holding tank or cistern, depending on how that's constructed. So it it seems like, you know, it's it's interesting to think of that as being urban service, and it would be, um I'm curious about what the the agreement has to be. When we talked about a an agreement for a subdivision that we don't remember what it was exactly, but we were talking of, they needed to have an actual, it was the campaign. Um set. Yeah, it was the public, it was the sewer treatment and they had to have somebody who was actually hired that had the certification go in there regularly and.
Now we do the number of lots of the city. Had it been less.
It became a public utility facility because of in uh for severity treatment plants, if it if it serves um I think fifteen or more.
Only twenty-five hundred gallons.
Yeah.
Yeah, it becomes a public utility facility, and that is why it had to have its management agreement removed from it before. Uh it would be issued.
Right, because one one well serving a variety of lots is a little bit of a crapshoot, and especially if it doesn't have to be drilled prior to this, the final split or the sale of any of those lots, then you just have three lots hanging. What we saw in two thousand and eight. I've had my license since two thousand and five. I lived here forever. Um what we saw in two thousand and eight was that the market shifted. A lot of things changed. Matt could tell you, things that were proposed to go a certain way didn't end up going that way. And then there were properties that just kind of hung around for a while and people picked up those properties with the plans that had been put in place weren't getting, didn't get finalized. And we kind of left some hanging chats out there. Important to me that we have things that make sense, that don't get sold out into the market to just let somebody else beg. But thank you for your education on how.
Last thing, I won't see you guys till September. I I go to South Korea with the national guard. Um starting in the middle of this, I think the sixteen, so Wednesday.
Which national guard?
Unfortunately, I'm telling them that Washington. Yeah, Idaho didn't have a logistics spot for, I'm a logistics officer in Kaplan. Um so they didn't have a spot anywhere uh more than Boise, and I like driving to Boise once a month. So I I found a unit in Spokane that's a pretty interesting, interesting, you know, I can chat with you about it sometime. We do some weird stuff. It's a really small thirty-five man team and a thirty-five person team commanded by a full bird panel. So it's really unique, it's really niche. Uh so we're going to South Korea. They're kind of falling on a liaison company there. Time with that, that's uh given the end of the year, I think in the end of the summer. Right, uh yeah, I'll be gone uh through the later, I'll be back after that. So I'll see you guys that first. You send me emails, you know, there'll be a couple of responses. I'll have my, I'll have email and I'll I'll be responding to staff. That's all. Well, thanks for your service.
Yeah, closing out or are we good?
I'll close it out. So we close the quote from between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and seven, Mike Perry hosted South TV show called Whose Line Is It Anywhere? Famously, beginning of every show and various times during the middle of the show, he would reiterate the show where everything's made up and the points don't matter. And that is the theory behind my point system.
See you guys there. I will say, Jay.
Jenna, what's your prediction on how this computer works on next meeting?
It's beyond my control.
You know, what is, what do you think is the challenge?
I think it's a connectivity issue and. Yes.
This year.
I'm still hardwired.
Okay, well, good. Somebody.